You're just in time. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is January 22nd, 2021 Shelby Historic Preservation Commission. This is a public hearing for locally designated historic landmarks. So we'll do roll call first. Lacey Basset.
Present.
Pat Carlo.
Present.
I'm here. Mary Durkin.
Present.
And we have one position that's unfilled. Mayor Shag.
Present.
Joe Geis.
Here.
And Jessica Grubbin is not here today. So we've established a quorum. The purpose of our hearing goes by Chapter 1488 Historic Landmarks and Buildings in the Codified Ordinances of the City of Shelby, which allows the Historic Preservation Commission to nominate properties as locally designated historic landmarks. City Council approves the nominations, which then become a part of the local inventory. The local designation is a powerful tool in protecting and preserving Shelby's local character now and in the future. There are three properties. Well, there's more than three properties, but three, three properties that we're looking at today that are already included on the National Register of Historic Places and the Ohio Historic Inventory. As a note, the 30-day public notice and the property owner notice requirement that's in the ordinance has been met. The information was sent December 22nd, 2020. I expect the process to go fairly quickly today. The commission has already vetted the properties to advance to this level, so I don't expect too much discussion on it. So we will move forward with the properties. So the first one that I have on the list is the contributing structures that make up the Shelby Center Historic District. We have one public comment for that, and I'll go ahead and read that into the record. This is from Cindy Lash and Ben Lash, who own the Wine Vault Downtown. It was the old Citizens Bank. It's on the National Register of Historic Places and also on the Ohio Historic Inventory. And she's, it was a little bit of, I sent a notice and let them know that they could come online on Zoom if they chose to come on and speak. So, but she sent a note back and said, "I'm sorry that we didn't respond sooner, but from what we know about the district, we are in favor of the nomination and all you are doing to protect our history. Thank you for all you do for Shelby and the downtown." And that's sincerely Ben and Cindy. And that was forwarded to all of the commission members. So as far as I know, that's the only public input. Joe, was there any other public input for that property? Oops, you're on mute.
Not for the downtown.
Okay.
Well, like, okay, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're talking about Shelby Center Historic District right now, so one public comment. So that was, we were taking written comments, and that's the only written comment. May I have a motion for recommendation to the city council to designate the contributing structures of the Shelby Center Historic District as a locally designated historic landmark?
I move.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I looked away. Who spoke?
I did.
Thank you, Mary. Sometimes I don't hear you recognize the voice. My apologies.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lacey. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The second one is Most Pure Heart of Mary Church.
Excuse me, Karen. Sorry. Should we include that this will be presented to council on February the 1st? Should we put that February 1st date in these motions? To be presented to council on February 1st?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Sorry.
It's okay. Let me make sure I write that in. Okay. Okay, I have no public comments from Most Pure Heart of Mary Church. Joe, were there any comments written and sent in? Okay. I'm probably going to ask you each time, but I already know the answer because I know that you forwarded whatever. Unless something came in last night, so. So having no public comments, may I have a motion for recommendation to city council to designate Most Pure Heart of Mary Church as a locally designated historic landmark on February 1st? That probably doesn't work right, but.
I'll make it work.
Thank you. So a motion. Thank you, Lacey. A second?
Okay, I second.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, we do. We'll just swap back and forth. So I have a second. And so all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Great. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The third one, Marvin Memorial Library. We did get a letter and and I'll read that into the record. Dear members of the Shelby Historic Preservation Commission, thank you for notifying the Board of Trustees of the upcoming nomination of the Marvin Memorial Library to the locally designated historic landmark list. The Board of Trustees met in special session on Monday, January 11th, 2021, and shared deep concerns about the impact this designation could have on the library's anticipated and for future developments. The trustees would like to have met with the commission for an in-depth conversation, but that is not feasible in this COVID season. Therefore, the Board of Trustees approved the local, I'm sorry, approved the following motion as a response to the proposed nomination. The Board of Trustees of the Marvin Memorial Library respectfully request a postponement of the Shelby Historic Preservation Commission's nomination of the Marvin Memorial Library as a locally designated historic landmark to allow for further research and to schedule a future in-person meeting with the Shelby Historic Preservation Commission when COVID-19 restrictions are lifted. And it's signed from Kathy Webb, the library director. Considering this letter, I would like to suggest that we honor their request to postpone moving this property forward at this time. Is there any other comment on that from the commission? Hearing none, then we will postpone that property. At this time.
Would you like me to say by consensus, we agree to, we honor, want to honor their request by consensus? We're going to honor their request to postpone to a later date. No date mentioned, no timeframe mentioned.
Yeah, if that's fine with everybody. I don't know that we need to have a motion for that.
No, we don't need a motion, but we need a comment in the minutes as to what we said.
Yeah, consensus. I, I have taught with Ms. Webb a couple of times. I've talked with another member of the Board of Trustees at one point before all of this and and I've suggested that maybe we could do a Zoom meeting because we have no idea, you know, what's going to happen in person and when we can even meet again in person. So I offered to, I have a Zoom accountant. I offered to meet with them by Zoom. It's kind of funny. I'm already teaching genealogy classes by Zoom for the library. So I think, I think maybe we.
I would think the trustees could end a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have Zoom capabilities. Yeah.
Should they?
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I understand, and I understand the concerns. I know that this is being done, what some people might feel is fairly quickly, but you know, I want to reiterate again that we need to have these, these, yeah, some of the, at least some of these national register properties on our locally designated list as we start to go for that CLG grant, the Certified Local Government Grant that we're doing to create local design guidelines. So it may seem like it's being done very quickly, but it's, you know, it's, it will be necessary to do that. So, and we've already got two, you know, two of the other properties on the list. So I think, I think we'll be okay. So.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with what we're doing here for them. I do, I, I, you know, they use the words deep concerns and I was like, really? What? I would hope that we can get that aired in a meeting Zoom with all of us or just with you for qualifications or whatever. Apparently they're not clear on the differences between one kind of designation and another, the advantages and disadvantages of being and not being.
Kathy's listening, I think, right now. Can she comment on a date that we could do this?
Not, not hearing from her, not seeing that she's on mute, so I'm not quite sure if she's able to answer or not. Joe, you would monitor the chat just in case she puts something in.
Raise chat. There, there she is. I do not have a microphone or camera. That's.
Gotcha.
Okay, no problem. I, I will get with them and, and set a date and it'll be within the next month or two months, depending on when they meet next. I don't, I'm not sure that there's a an urgency on it at this point. I'm kind, I kind of have it in my mind that we would have another public hearing, maybe sometime by June or in June, maybe, to look at these locally designated, I mean, I'm sorry, Ohio Historic Inventory properties. Now that we have more than we thought we had. This may take a little longer, but, but anyway, yeah, we're. Pat, I don't know if you were on when I mentioned it, but there's a one property called the Reed House on Smiley.
I know the Reed House. I know it well. I've been in it many times.
Have you? Yeah, it's Stan Cain's house.
Yes. When you referred to it as the Reed House, when I was a kid, I was in it when it was Reed House. So, yeah.
Yeah, he, he was excited when I, when I told him yesterday, but, and, and if you know, he's the one that Stan Cain graphics is.
Very supportive of this story.
Yeah, so, okay, so we'll move on then. I will get with the, the library and find out when their next available time to meet is and, and work with them and see if we can't set up a Zoom meeting to be able to do that. So. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then. Shelby Pure Milk Company Barn on Whitney Avenue. I do see that Melinda Bigelow is on with us now. We got an email late yesterday from city council member Garland Gates. I don't know whether he meant for this to be public input. I don't know whether I should read this in or paraphrase it or.
He sent it to all the members of the commission.
Yeah.
It becomes a public document.
So. So do I need to read it in full or?
I, I would just read his comments above. He does, you don't have to read through the stuff from the standards because we all have that.
Okay.
Yeah, his comments above and then his, his third item. He made three different points.
Okay, all right. So this is from city council member Garland Gates. Members of the Historic Preservation Commission, I understand that you have before you a nomination form regarding the Shelby Pure Milk Barn as a locally designated historic landmark. I have every confidence that you will be thorough in your review of this matter. That being said, I do wish to bring to your attention three concerns. Firstly, the nomination form clearly states, please attach current photos, historic photos, and a description of the property's current and historic uses. Although the form has attached to it a rather droll poem, that old barn, the required attachments are missing. In other words, the nomination form at best is incomplete. Secondly, the burden of proof is upon the property owner to show that the property being nominated meets the standards spelled out in codified ordinance 1488.05B. And then he, for your convenience, he lists the standard or the, the ordinance there. Let's see. The commission has before it nothing to indicate that even one of these standards has been met. Thirdly, the property is not in compliance with codified ordinance, Chapter 1490, External Property Maintenance, specifically Section 1490.11A regarding exterior surfaces. I've attached photos taken today that show this significant non-compliance. I wish to thank you for your service on the commission and for your consideration of the information contained herein. I called. Sorry. I called Ms. Bigelow last night and talked to her at length about, about the, the three concerns in here. And so I want to address each one of them individually. The original email to the commission that was sent November 16th did have a current photo in it. So I'm not sure if that was forwarded to Mr. Gates, Councilman Gates, when he got the rest of the package. I'm not really sure who forwarded it and, and when, but I, I would agree with his comment that it probably is incomplete. I know that when we were looking for information, there was a fair amount of information about the Shelby Pure Milk Company, not so much about the barn. And I, you know, I did do kind of a cursory, you know, background check to help her out and, and didn't find a whole lot. We also didn't really look into the history of that barn. It was not built by that company. It was already there and was probably part of a farm at one point. And so when I talked to Ms. Bigelow last night, I had also contacted Gary Bly, who, you know, is a former council or commission member. And, you know, when he left the commission, he said, "I am willing to help you any way I can. I'll do some background research for you," something like that. So I contacted him last night and he is very willing to do it. Actually just found out that he is a relative of the Robinson family, which Ms. Bigelow was a Robinson. So he, he's pretty interested in knowing a little bit more about the history anyway. So he will help us to beef that up. And I would agree that we probably need to have a better history and context into it. And so secondly, the, you know, burden of proof is on the property owner. We did, I can't remember if it was November or December meeting, when we first started talking about this particular property, we did decide that it met the cultural historic standard. So but we will make sure that that's included in, in the packet that comes forward again. The, the, the third concern of his about the external property, what he's talking about is that the building needs to be painted. I think it has a wonderful patina on it already and it kind of matches a patina in most of the barns that are, you know, out in the country. If, if, Ms. Bigelow is. Yeah, Ms. Bigelow has tried to get some estimates on repainting that barn. They're somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000. So you can understand why farmers don't paint their buildings anymore, their barns. I do understand that it's in the city limits and it has to go by certain codes. I also don't know that that's something that we should decide or even take into consideration when we're looking at this particular landmark. She did go to court earlier this week and is trying to work towards reconciling it. She's running into issues with COVID, you know, and trying to find somebody, you know, that, that will actually paint it and, you know, get a reasonable cost for, for painting it. So she is working towards that. And for all of those reasons, when I talked to her last night, we talked about also postponing this particular property to, you know, a point in the future when we can pull together a, a formal historic plan to go with this. And maybe she will have made some headway at that point in the painting of the, of the property. So any, any other, so what, what I'm asking is that we postpone this property. Is there any other comment on this?
I think that we should take this as a lesson learned. We need to make certain that when these nominations come forward, that we are assisting as much as possible and directing owners as much as possible to get us a, as thoroughly and complete history on the structure, its former uses, its current uses, some of the things that are listed here in terms of saying, how was it a piece of our community? What was the service of that building to the community? And what activities went on in that building that served the community? It's a lesson learned. We need to be a little more thorough when these things come to us and provide what assistance we can to help them to find resources to track it down. I'm really glad that Gary's on board with this. Gary is, he's excellent at rooting up these little details. So I'm glad that Gary has, has come forward. I appreciate that very much. And you can tell him I said so.
Thank you. I do agree. And I, I think that we probably actually need to revise that form as more filling the bank blank thing rather than a, just a general comment in there saying include all this. I think it actually should be.
It was a lifted form. I lifted that form from another commission. And it was a form that had been approved by ship of, of another commission. It's part of the design guidelines.
The guidelines that Garland stated should probably be at the very top of that form so that applicants can see exactly what the ordinances say.
That's an excellent comment, Mary. And originally I did that and had, the form was much longer originally with our wording from 1488.05 on the form. And Garland asked me to remove it. He thought it was too wordy. Just a point of reference.
I did, you add something. I'm thinking it would be helpful for us to understand what standards are for the requirements for historical evidence. Because I am thinking that there are, you know, potential instances where there may be a historical property that is, we may only have one source. And, you know, to establish that it fits within those standards, is that going to be sufficient? And what does that look like? As a historian, Christina, you might be able to speak to this to some degree. Is an oral record or something like a poem, is that just as valid as, you know, a more official account? Does it have a, have to be a primary or can it be a secondary, et cetera? So I don't know if, you know, if, where we would go to get kind of the standards on that, but that's probably something we should have going forward too, so we can be consistent and not leave out properties that may not have an extreme amount of historical record behind them, but still are historic.
That's a very good point. And I, I do think that there was a certain amount of research that Bob Cassidy did. I mean, he put it in the, in that form of a poem, but I do, you know, at the bottom of the record, there were several people that he thanked, you know, for helping to provide information. So it does look like there was a certain amount of research that was done. And I, yeah, I don't think we should discount something just because it was a poem written at one point or it, you know, it could be, you know, anything else. I do think too that and I don't want to get too technical in it, but I, I think that, you know, that we, we do need to have some, you know, citations. Where did they get that information? And I'm not talking a formal citation like you would normally see in a footnote or something like that. But I think that, you know, we and I hate, at the risk of kind of, and maybe I won't go there. We have some history written in a form of two small booklets that have no references to where the information was found. And it's, some of it, I'm sure are very nice stories, but how do we know that they weren't embellished or there, or, you know, where the information was gotten at some point in time? So, you know, I think, you know, some of the past nominations that we've had, I think Joe and, and some others have found actual newspaper articles where it talked about, you know, those particular structures. And, but unfortunately, you know, like I said, when I, when I did superficial search of the barn on Whitney, I wasn't able to find much. So, you know, we, we will go back. It would be interesting. I'm kind of interested to know anyway, as a historian, you know, who owned that property originally? When was that barn built? How old is the barn? Because we really don't know how old the barn is. And I think that probably should be included. We may find that, you know, it was an early settler that we want to honor as well as the Robinson family and the Shelby Pure Milk Company. So. Any other?
It's important for us to remember when we're talking about the standard or what, what are we looking for when we're deciding whether something is historic. We get caught up in the memories that people have of the structure. And I, for one, will tell you, my memory is fatal in it. And I know I fill in the blanks with things that sound really good. And it's easy to do. And we've done that. We can sit around the table sometime where we could be in person and just brainstorm memories. It's fun, but it is not historic documentation. And we need to be careful with that.
Yeah, and I, and I do understand that, but to Lacey's point too, we, you know, both of the nominees, Melinda Bigelow and her sister Cynthia Robinson are the children of the owner of the Shelby Pure Milk Company. And I think we need to capture that history.
Yes. I, I agree 100%. We need to capture the history of the Shelby Pure Milk Company. And in that history, the farm should surface. It should surface how that farm was used and when.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great. Any other comments? So if there's a consensus, we will postpone that particular property and work with Ms. Bigelow and Ms. Robinson and, and Gary Bly to have a more formal plan going forward. Application. Great. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the last one, Shelby Mutual Insurance Company on Mansfield Avenue. We do have one public comment on that one. This is from Carl Ridenhour. Hey, Joe, he's addressing Joe Geis here. "Hey, Joe, I'm interested in the historic value of the property. I remember when I served on council that we shut off the utilities here because of the owner's delinquent taxes and utility payments. Since then, the building has become unusable and all of the parking areas were sold off to others. I hate to say it, but it's an eyesore that doesn't appear to have a future." That's the public comment on that one. I would like to give a reminder also that, you know, we're going to find a lot of different properties that are going to be, you know, that, that owners are going to ask to be listed and for various reasons. In, in this case, this building, if it's put on even a local inventory, you know, could be eligible for grants, for, you know, tax credits for, and even might have more marketability in being able to be sold and the new owner, you know, taking on the historic restoration of the building. You know, it's one of the, probably one of the newer buildings that we would have on the local register at this point. But still, I, you know, I think we determined that the last meeting that was worthy of being listed as a locally designated historic landmark because of the history of the company. listed um, as a locally designated historic landmark because of the history of the company uh, in town. So, does anyone else have comments on that?
It's just going to get older, you know, it's.
We'll get older.
Yeah. And, and our interior is not really our concern. Parking space is not our concern. Our concern is the outdoor architectural value of that building to our community.
And it's a classic nineteen fifty's corporate headquarters. It was corporate headquarters in nineteen fifty. And it's, it's a classic structure for that sense.
It is very much so, yeah.
I will say that I was sitting on that council that Carl Ridenour makes reference to. And there was considerable discussion about that building many times. Joe Geis is well aware of all the different conversations. Um, it came before me again in the planning commission, when I was on the planning commission, this particular building. And the owner of the building is looking to do some uh, what he's calling airspace credits, which has a monetary value. And it doesn't happen unless the building is historical. Uh, he did tell us that Schipow had refused to put it on the Ohio uh, inventory because it wasn't yet old enough at the time that he request, made that request. And you're right, it is the youngest building we would have under local designation should this go to council. But I will not be surprised if when this goes to council, there aren't some questions at this building. And its historic significance. Not, it's what it is, it's not the historical significance, which is the only thing that we're interested in. It's the history that the building has had as a property in the city, a property that was controversial. The owner getting certain issues brought about this property repeatedly. That does not change its historic value. But it leaves a bad taste with some persons. That's all I, I can say. And if you really want details, you need to do one-on-one, face-to-face with Joe and Joe can tell you when how many times this building has been discussed.
And, and I do understand that. And I do understand that that is something that City Council would probably consider. But I mean, as far as historic preservation and the value of it being put, there's potential huge potential value in him being able to find funding to fix the things that. And, and we need to look at that when we're talking about historic preservation with any buildings. Yeah, you know, if you look at a lot of the buildings that are downtown now, you know, would they have been put on the historic register looking like they do now? I don't know. I mean, it.
Do you recall with the owner, when he presented the nomination to us, he was very detailed in the history of the structure and even the history of the company that was housed in the structure? I don't remember much about his future for the structure, what he thought was going to be happening in the future. I don't know what he has in mind for the structure. I don't remember him commenting on marketing it in any particular way. I know it's been marketed multiple times and remains unsold. I know that. But um, historically, the first building, if I'm correct, and Joe, jump in if I'm wrong, please. The first building of the Mutual White Glass Insurance Company was the one that actually ended up being City Hall for a short period of time. And then came down after the oh seven flood.
Actually, um, even before that, they were in the Rich Green dropped off some books and I can share them with you if we ever get again, but it was actually some old newsletters from Shelby Insurance. And hell, it has a lot of history, but they were actually in the building uh, where our police and court was before that got torn. So they were in there, then moved, you know, I think there have been several places in their infancy, but I think that was their first big headquarter building they built.
Okay, all right. So it's always been located uh, in Shelby uh, until more recent history when it packed up and moved south. But uh, and, and we have a fantastic structure that they built before they moved south. It is now empty. The um, the history of the company very definitely affected the growth of this city. Without that insurance company, the number of people in this city whose families were supported by that insurance company is amazing. There were a lot of people supported by that insurance company. And for that reason, it has a huge historic economic piece to who Shelby is. And I don't have any problem with any of that. The building currently, that building that we're discussing, is probably has some life in it, but it's going to take a lot of rehabilitation, interior and exterior, to put it to a usable form. Um, it's unfortunate that uh, the property owner has had issues with the city in a lot of different ways over the years. That's unfortunate.
It is, and I, but I, I do think that his heart is in the right place and I think um, he very much um, understands historic preservation and um, and I, you know, I think his plans for it are, you know, to make sure that it's um, restored um, in a historically correct manner. And, you know, whether it's by him or whether he sells it to, you know, another um, you know, preservationist, you know, that can renovate it. Um, I, you know, I think, I, I, sometimes it's really hard to get, you know, if we get caught up in, in the history of it and, you know, and we really need to just look at it for what it is. It is a his, you know, what we would consider a historic property. And I think worthy of being on our locally designated list. Any other comments on that? So I think, I think what I'm hearing is that we'd like to move forward on that and that I will um, entertain, I've lost all my notes here. I'll maintain a a motion for recommendation to the City Council to designate uh, the Shelby Mutual Building on uh, nineteen Mansfield Avenue as a locally designated historic landmark on February first.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mary.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Lacey.
Hey Chris, before you make your vote, I would just suggest that before this is sent to council, we get a hold of that information from Randy and have that available to council members so that may stop any roadblocks during council meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Um, and we need to have that for our records anyway. It was something that he, it was too large a file for him to email to us, so. Uh, I will make sure that he drops that off to City Council, I mean to uh, City Hall. Uh, all in favor signify I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion uh, carries unanimously. I will be at the February first meeting. I need to get on the agenda. There's actually three items. Now, this um, the locally designated um, properties that we want to move forward, um, the uh, CLG grant that they need to approve to move forward and um, our annual report, um, which is due the end of January, so they will get it um, before the, they'll, they'll get it within the constraints of our ordinance. Um, but I'll be talking about it February first, so. Um, and so that is the next step, that the commission um, forwards a copy of the hearing minutes um, along with the recommendations to City Council to be considered at their next meeting on February first. Um, Joe, when do you need all of this to um, add to their packets?
So Stacy will complete those next Friday.
Okay.
So if you could get them in, you know, that Thursday by the latest would be, that way if she'd start making copies or whatever.
That would be what, the twenty eighth?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get it in before that.
I'm, I'm going to say Wednesday. I'll try, I'll have all my stuff in by Wednesday, just to.
Um, I'll be there before Wednesday. I just want to know what you put down here.
Um, Joe, also just a quick question. Do, do you um, there's places for signatures on that CLG grant. I'm assuming that those have to be signed uh, before it's the whole packet sent to the.
No, I wouldn't sign it until after it's approved by council.
After, okay, all right, good, okay. Good, then I'll have, then, okay. I didn't know if I need, had needed add extra time to get the signatures or not.
Or, or it's card second.
Yeah. So um, that concludes our only business today. And this was a public hearing, so um, that was the only business that we were going to conduct today. Are, if, are there any other comments? All right, if not, then the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Thank all of you. Everybody have a good weekend.
Thank you.